All right. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Land Use Committee of the Common Council of Bloomington, Indiana for Wednesday, February 26, 2020. We have one item on the agenda, which is Ordinance 20-04, to amend the city of Bloomington's zoning maps by rezoning property from business park, residential, single-family, and to join an existing planned unit development, and to approve the associated district ordinance preliminary plan at 1550 North Arlington Park Drive, Trinitas Petitioner. Mr. Gurlik, I think you indicated there was not much new from the staff side to report. Is that?
Correct. I was just going to reserve time for questions and answers, so there's really nothing presentation-wise that I had new.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I just want to remind everybody that this is kind of a continuation of a discussion we started two weeks ago, so we will not have an overview presentation. But I believe the petitioner has some new information to present to us. Is that right? So come on up and state your name for the record and give us any updates you have.
I'm Kimberly Hansen with Trinitas, and we just wanted to say we're excited to be here again. We appreciated all the feedback we got last time. And Dan Moriarty, our architect, has been working on some items for you, so I'm going to go ahead and let him present what he has.
Thank you.
From our last episode, we talked about some changes to the site plan, so...
And could you just state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Dan Moriarty. Studio M Architecture. And if you can see... Okay, yeah, it's up on that screen as well. This is our site plan, and I'll go through a few of the changes we made from our last discussion two weeks ago. One of the comments was, for those who may be seeing it for the first time, we have a series of building types. We have a four-story multifamily building, a series of townhomes, some cottages, and then also some single-family homes over here to the north that are in what we call Section A, which is here. Some of the comments from last week, we looked at the street grid, we looked at the mix of the housing, and we talked about some of the materials and other design aspects of the project. So some of the things we've looked at since last time, we've moved kind of a pocket of cottages down here in the kind of the east half of Building B down here. At the end of the day, we ended up with the same number of beds, 825 and 306 units in total on the property. There's a little bit distribution, there's a little bit of difference in distribution, so our statistics at the side here are slightly different than they were, maybe in some of the earlier materials you had seen.
Excuse me, Mr. Moriarty. Can you make it full screen and a little bigger so we can see it better up there in the smaller screens that we're facing?
Yeah. Let me see if I can move this.
Thank you.
That's a little bit better than that. I've actually got each area broken down, so we can look at each one. But this is that center drive, of course. You'll see moving through here. And then we've got Area B, Area C here where the multifamily is, and then Area D, we've changed the mix in that area a bit to respond to some of the comments about some diversity, if you want to call it, in the package of buildings. So you'll see, let's go to a little larger view here. Maybe that'll help. These are awfully big files, so it takes just a second to come on. This first section is the single-family home area, and the shaded area represents the green zone, if you want to call it that, or the set aside for the natural landscape. And then these are the single-family lots with the street system and alleys that have been discussed. No change really to that area. It's still catching up here. I'm going to go ahead and change. Sorry for the delay here. This is...
This is the PDF on my hard drive.
Yeah, I think it's as... Hopefully if it does this once, it'll go a little quicker on the next ones. This is the area that is Area D in the upper, be the southwest corner of the site. And this is where we made some redistribution of the units. In terms of the anti-monotony concern, you'll see in the model, we've got a model to show you here in a second, that we changed up the mix a bit of the cottages within the streets here. And then we added in townhomes at the entrance here and here. We previously had them here already. We added a couple more here, and then we added a row at the, across from the bigger building right here. So those used to be cottages. They've been changed to townhomes. And based on that, we have 43 townhomes in the neighborhood, 38 cottages for 139 DUEs. That's about 12 units per acre within Area D here. You can see as the parking as it lays out and so forth. I'll go back one slide here to the Area C. This is the multifamily section. This is coming into view here. That's the 50-foot, or 100-foot, I'm sorry, easement that crosses the site there. This is our multifamily building here in the corner on the interstate. And then here is the set aside areas as we've talked about. And then in Area B, this area with the most grade change, or there's a lot of grade change here, and there's some, several wetlands you see coming into view here. So here, we've added a little cell of cottages down here at the... Sure. Let me get a little bigger. And then we've stepped the townhomes along the street there, as we discussed last time. So right there on that corner, and then we added this little cell of cottages here. So maybe the best way to look at all of this is, first, we'll return to the renderings for just a second to give you a reminder of the colors and kind of the massing of the multifamily building. This is the end wing where the retail space is, and then the clubhouse is in the center Then this is from that corner looking, the multifamily building would be on this side of the screen. Then these are the townhomes at the intersection with the cottages down the street here. Then I've got the model to show you that, more than anything, it's just to show you that, I guess, the amount of opportunity. This is kind of the fun part for us. As you can see, there's a tremendous amount of complexity to the site in terms of grades, the green space we have to work with, et cetera. And we can move this around a little bit to show you that really each one of these buildings becomes a design problem in itself. If you think about the grades at the site we're dealing with, these are the grades that Bynum Fanyo have worked out for the street. We don't have grading for the entire site yet, since that's such a, it's a critical element to this, but it's very, the process takes a lot of time. And with the two weeks we had, we wanted to take the street, which we knew what that was. We kind of interpolated the rest of the grades as best we could, and we started to put the cottages and townhomes in these, in their locations. So as you can see, there's this kind of this zone at the bottom of each home. See that right there is area that we've got to figure out as we design these homes, how to work with that grade, set the elevation of the house, take advantage of the grade as it moves around the building. And it's just a process that takes a lot of effort, that we're anxious to get started on, but until we know we have a project that's approved, it's not one that you can do quickly. But you can see here, this is a shot of the streetscape as you move down the main aisle or the main drive. Here's a multifamily at the end down here. These are the cottages. You can see the amount of grade that comes down the street there. Whoops, let me do this. So that's a shot, just a section of the ground, and I was trying to show you here just this one, see like, just like right in there, see how much grade there is right there coming up that hill onto this parking lot? And then when you come around to, say, these townhomes, look how much grade, you know, there is to make up down through. Each of those lines represents a foot, essentially. So you can see how much grade there is to make up as we go across there. So all this is to show you that this is a work in process, that we do the best we can to tell you exactly what's going to happen on all these buildings, but I think therein lies the nice part about the process, is we'll get to continue to work with Eric on the layouts, get to work with Eric on the colors, materials, and make sure we follow the PUD, make sure we are consistent with what we've shown in the renderings. But it's an effort that's going to take some time to get to the level of detail that you may be interested in seeing. So as you'll see, each, one question last time, we're about porches, and you'll see that each cottage has its own porch, in some cases kind of a double porch. And then each townhome also has a small covered entry, you can kind of see on the corner there. There are also questions about the ends of the townhomes and making sure that those were not just a blank wall. So we've wanted to make sure that we're answering that concern as well. So is there any particular view or area that I can spend to that you'd like to see?
Committee members, do you want to make any requests? Want more at this?
Can you show us an example of an alley in this? I mean, one thing that's missing from this is cars, like it's like no one lives there right now. I take it that these streets are parallel parking, but show us an example of an alley in this section of the project.
In this section, we don't really have too much of an alley. I mean, we've got a green space between the cottages here. Both these roads are, or I'm sorry, are, yes, are parallel parking.
So there are two streets now where there was one with two alleys. You've made it into two streets, basically.
I think...
Right, I thought that they had, okay.
Let me do this real quick.
No, no, I get it now. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be more for the townhome section. So if you're, when you, if I've missed that already, then?
There we go. The townhome section is probably the one that's, one of the harder to...
Right. I just want to get a sense of what that looked like through, I mean, I appreciate this 3D view very much. That's what I've been asking for.
Are there any other questions regarding the images we've seen of Area D before we move on? Okay. Go ahead. So then we're moving to Area B now, the townhomes that are now dispersed with cottages?
Yes, this is...
Oh. Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have a question?
I have one question. Those, the streets we're looking at right now, the curve, or the one farther back in the, almost, yes, back there, where the curve is, would you consider making that like a right angle turn instead of a curve, just to slow the traffic in that space?
This one for Jeff.
I'm Jeff Van, of Van and Associates. If we look at a site plan, I think we show, we'll see that we are avoiding a wetland area by putting that curve in there. If we'd made a T-intersection, we'd be right in the, either in the edge or even in the middle of the wetland that we're trying to preserve.
Okay. It has to do with the bridge, I guess. Okay.
Then if you were asking about alleys a second ago, in a way, in the townhomes, this is like straight-in parking with access down between the townhomes. I guess that's about the only real kind of...
Can we zoom in on that?
Alley area. And then these are, I guess, maybe more the single-family, yeah, over here.
But if you can zoom in on the townhomes in that particular section? So where are the front doors?
The front doors are at the covered entries here.
So let's look at the other side of the building. These are, this is the back of those buildings?
Yes.
Where are the front doors of the buildings across the street from it?
They are here.
So is the back of the building, the, I don't have a name for these buildings, are the buildings on the left side, are they, what are the, you know, how are they going to interact with the buildings across the street from them? Are they going to, I mean, are they going to be designed 360, or is the buildings facing the parking lot? I just don't quite get...
Steve, if you remember from the last meeting, this Area B was a challenge due to the preservation of the wetlands, which is required. But in addition, we went ahead and preserved the area between the wetlands for flowways. And because of that, we had, we were able to create a streetscape along the public road where you see the fronting, and then we have the parking to the rear, and then we have the other row of buildings that front on the parking area. We really didn't have an opportunity to create an alley system there, which I think Matt had drawn up an idea, due to the preservation of some environmental features that we wanted to maintain.
I appreciate that. I think the specific thing I was going for was, what can we do to make both sides, both sets of asphalt here, look more like a street and less like a parking lot? The, you know, if you've got this one building on the right that, it's fronting on the parking lot, and the other building, you know, is back as to the parking lot, that doesn't, doesn't sound inspiring, exactly, you know? Like if the, if the back of this left-hand building also looked like the front, that would help. I mean, it seems pretty promising from here, but that's all I'm getting at.
Right. The one choice we have, Mr. Jeff quickly is, not choice, but one thing we haven't developed yet or had time, is if you think about the first floor of that townhome, it's basically a living, dining, and kitchen area, right? So it's an open plan across the back, and then the intent is to have outdoor area or patio, there, in fact, one of these would be a door that would come out. Now, would it be a, look like an entrance? Probably not. I mean, we would probably keep, I think we want the streetscape to have the prominent facade as far as entry/exit. Now, maybe not. I mean, there is an option where you could flip those.
I'm pretty sure that they'll want to keep the streetscape, as you've shown, but the question I think Steve's getting at is, can we put an entry on the rear side of the building so it looks like it's matching up to the building across the parking area?
Yeah, I mean, look, I, you seem to have done a good job in Area D with making a true streetscape. You've got parallel parking on it. You've got the houses closer to the street. And here, I don't see why it has to be that different. Where are we now? I'm not sure what we're looking at.
This is the area you're talking about.
This is Area D?
Yeah, this is Area...
Yeah. I mean, with the, the absence of cars is the only thing that's disappointing in this view, but compare it to Area B, I'd like to see something similar. Like, I wonder, is there parking on that curved road that Councilman Rosenbarger just talked about? Is there parking on the main street in front of the townhomes on the main road there? Like, you can spread the parking out and create a streetscape at the same time, yeah. Is there parking on the road in front of this here?
Yeah, this is one of those, it's a matter, was a matter of time for us a little bit. There is parallel parking, I believe, on the road at that point, correct?
So there's already parking, okay, so the road you're pointing to is the one in front of...
Yeah. Let's pull up, let's pull up the site plan again real quick here.
I don't mean to go so far into this.
Right now, I don't believe that there is parallel parking on that main street in front of the townhomes.
Is there any particular objection to parallel parking on the street?
We removed the parking on the public road in front of the townhouses because we're on an 8% slope coming down that hill.
Oh, okay.
Which, in some areas around Bloomington, we have parallel parking on 8% slopes. But we thought it would be a, might be a challenge for some people to get in and out of those.
I mean, if that's the reason you left it off, please put it back in. First of all, for most people on the, if we're looking at this display here, this handsome, I love this, by the way, this topological display, according to this, the road in front of those townhomes, can we go back to that 3D view? If you're headed eastbound, you're going uphill, which is easier to park on than if you're going downhill, I think. So it's less chance that your car will, well, I don't know. I mean, parallel parking is a skill that I think people need to have, and people who want parking are going to figure out how to parallel park. That should not be the reason why it's not on this street. And if you can put it on this street, that's that much fewer, that much less 90-degree parking you can put in the back, and maybe you can create a, something that approaching a streetscape between those two buildings. I don't see why you can't make these buildings' street fronts look more like Area D. They're really close, all right? But right now, I see a parking lot.
Right.
And the idea of green space in the back, you know, is not as appealing as, you know, porch space that's close to the street. Right now, with cars parked 90 degrees, it's going to be a wall of cars between you and the street. I don't know. I'm just looking for way, I mean, I see no reason why parallel parking, also, parallel parking on any street in this project will slow traffic down, which is what we want. So if you can't make that curve a right angle, you can put parking on it that will slow traffic down.
If it physically can work for Jeff, we can eliminate some of the spots back here, maybe.
I'm looking to reduce as much of the 90-degree parking as possible in favor of parallel parking. If you can spread it out, you might be able to get all the parking that you believe that you need.
If we add parallel parking to the public road frontage, there could be a reduction in the parking lot. It's not going to eliminate all of it, but it could be a significant reduction.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
It sure goes without saying, but the reason we left this black and white was we just didn't, we haven't gone in and rendered each house and thought about the colors for each house, but understand the intent would be to, of course, make it interesting.
I just want to say I'm very appreciative that you've built this model at all, and every developer should be doing this, and it's better than nothing, and I have enough detail here. I would like to see the cars, because it's an illusion to pretend that there aren't going to be cars everywhere here, and it would be nice to see them. But having said that, you've heard my concern.
Okay.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thanks. Sorry, I'm confused about this. So on these homes, you enter through the front. Right now, there aren't, there will be doors on the back?
Well, the plan of the townhome is, the first floor here has that living room, kitchen, and dining, right? So usually, we have an entrance on one side and then a patio or something in the back, you know, an outdoor area with the kitchen.
Okay. So mostly people, there's no parking out front, so, right, so you would be parking in the back and going in the back door?
Unless we, yeah, can figure out a way to add the parallel.
Taking Steve's suggestion, we'll have parking in front as well.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
So we'll have parking along here, and then on the second, third floor are the bedrooms, so.
I have a question on this view here. What is the little narrow drive that pokes out to the left?
This guy right here?
Yeah.
I think that was an alley for the single-family.
That's an alley that will access, there's three single-family lots for the city there. And rather than have driveways on that main road, we provide an alley so they could put garages in the rear and park off the alley.
Just like these alleys over here would access the garages. Conceivably, that's what that's for, for those three lots.
Are those three lots part of Area A?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
That's going to the city?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see.
I have a question.
Councilmember Flaherty?
I'll echo some of those points and have a question. It's helped me to articulate what is sort of challenging about this area, and I know you're dealing with topographical constraints here. It made me think of an area on the southwest side of town, a PUD, I think it's called Blackwell Homes, that's what Google Maps is telling me. It's off of, just north of Tap, and it's kind of a series of, they might be attached homes on a set of small streets, and it's the same thing you're going to run into here where it's backspacing fronts. And it's like, just a, not a very public space pedestrian realm friendly kind of environment to have like your front porch facing somebody's garage, which I know the garage isn't the case here, so maybe it'd be a little better. But I do wonder if it's not possible to, part of it's the parking, that you've got 90-degree pull-in parking in front that makes it much more like a parking lot than a street, and I wonder if having alleys, you know, small alleys behind the units for parking instead, in combination with parallel parking, would be possible and make this more of a street, a streetscape kind of feel, which I think is what all of us are kind of interested in and trying to articulate. What constraints do you feel like there are in the context of trying to put some parking behind the buildings and converting to all parallel parking in front? You still have a back-front problem in one case, but...
What you're going to see, could you turn that view about 90 degrees there? That's good, right there. It doesn't show up very well here, but where you see the townhomes on the left, to the left of the hand there, that area back there is going to be a natural area. It's not going to be disturbed, and it's going to be a natural, it's going to look like a wetland. Part, north and south of that building is a wetland, and the conditions between the two will be a natural area that will be, I think, a very pleasant thing for those townhomes to have the back patio out overlooking. So it's not like they're going to be in a sea of a parking lot, but if we put an alley back there, got rid of the parking in front, just had a street in front, you're going to have asphalt behind those buildings up against the wetland and the ephemeral stream. And what we tried to do is protect that ephemeral stream that connects the two wetlands and move the buildings off of that, and then provide the parking in front in between the two rows of buildings. And if you get your most efficient parking out of having an aisle and parking to both sides, and if we, if we put an alley behind that building, we're just really adding asphalt and impervious surface area and creating a barrier between the rear of those homes and the ephemeral streams. So I think the layout, and it's kind of what we discussed last, two weeks ago, about the constraints of this area.
Do you think...
So it was really trying to preserve those environmentally sensitive areas the best we could.
Do you think, Jeff, that you can...
And also take advantage of them for the views of the individual units.
Do you think you can put parallel parking along here physically?
I don't know if we'll have enough parking. That's the other thing, this side...
I was just going to say, there's about 50 spaces here?
Yeah. I don't think we're, we're not going to get nearly that many.
But I mean, if we got, you know, can we do it both sides? I don't know. That counts?
We could, and we might.
If we do it both sides, if we get 20 or 30...
I'm sorry, we're losing some of what you're saying because of the mumbling and the...
We shouldn't be talking like this.
Yeah. Well, the question was...
You asked me the number of parking, the parallel parking spaces we're going to get out front. I think we're going to get between 15 and 20 spaces. I think we're going to get between 15 and 20 spaces, and we have about 50 in that parking area behind. So we'll lose 40% of them.
Which could be reduced then by 15 to 20.
We could do that.
I'd be interested in seeing that.
I'm speaking for my client without talking to my client, but...
You could make this parallel through here as well, maybe?
I don't, we're going to lose too much parking doing that.
If I can jump in here. Can I, can I spell that?
Hi, Jeff Knabel, Trinitas Ventures. Is it, so I think I understand the comments here that we're receiving, I think they make sense, and I'm wondering, is there a way that we can work with Eric and staff to figure this out, to study this a little bit better so that we're not kind of fumbling through on our side here to work? We all know we've got to provide parking to the residents, I think you recognize that, and we will, but certainly appreciate the comment on the streetscape, you know, improvements, and trying to add additional parallel parking along the main street. I'm wondering about the grade situation, so if possible, we'd love to take it offline, work with staff on how to improve the situation.
Yes, I think what we had in mind was perhaps early next week to develop another reasonable condition, if it proves feasible to do what we would like to see. So we don't have to make the sausage tonight on this one.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I mean, just to add to that, the question I was going to ask was, is there any street-like part of this entire project where you would have a problem with parallel parking? Like, what if we were, the goal is not to get rid of parking so much as the 90-degree parking, but the parallel parking works as a traffic calmer.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's a boon to everybody. So like, is there any particular street in the project where you consider parallel parking to be off limits?
I can think of one area was the electrical easement that we were utilizing.
And that's the, yeah, I grant you that.
Okay.
Okay. But other than that, like, anything that's street-like, like, because basically, the area between the two sets of townhomes is a parking lot, not a street. And if you can make it look more like a street, and you can use the parking in front of that main building, on that main road, put parking on that road, on both sides of it, you get the parking count that you're looking for, which we've already found to be pretty reasonable, and you make it more of a streetscape.
Yep, yeah.
So, yeah, if you can make that happen between now and next week, more power to you, and, you know, like, I certainly endorse that very strongly. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, just one more question of clarification related to this, not to belabor the point too much, but the westernmost part of that parcel on the top, there's, I don't know, 14 or 15 buildings there, and it looks like 11 or 12 spaces kind of near it. What did the petitioner anticipate for those residents in terms of parking?
Yeah, that's clearly parking-challenged as designed today. Our thought is the pathway that traverses to the south and west would serve to bring people from their parking into their resident location. Unfortunately, there is not a lot of parking kind of immediately adjacent, but that was just a limitation for that particular location.
Okay, thanks.
And a property management challenge for us, I think.
Councilmember Volin?
In that section that Councilmember Flaherty refers to, would you consider a loading zone? Like, put a couple of spaces that's just for people to load and unload large things?
I would have no reason to object to that, absolutely.
That might make it more appealing to the people living there, is that at least they know they can load stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, does petitioner have other new information to share with us, or shall we go into general questions?
General questions, fine.
Okay. All right, so we did get some questions answered via email earlier this week. Are there any questions that committee members would like to highlight for the public or would like to ask anew tonight? Councilmember Flaherty?
A question as well first for the chair, which is, how do we want to handle reasonable conditions that are drafted? Will we discuss those later with petitioner, and this is just for initial questions?
Yes, I would ask that you keep the questions general, and then we will go over the, you know, maybe in, well, I'd like to go to the public, and then we will do the reasonable conditions.
Okay, great. I'll start with a question, then. I had sent an email, kind of just trying to unpack and understand petitioner's thinking around solar energy, and, you know, I believe there's a commitment to do a number of parking spaces, electric vehicle parking spaces, and possibly pursue some solar on the main building, and of course, or, sorry, the large multifamily building to power common areas. And I'm just trying to work my head around like what the challenges for the petitioner and developers in this context, and the sort of obvious answer is a split incentive issue. You're not paying the utility bills, so you don't have a way to recuperate return on investment if you invest in solar energy for the roofs of townhomes, duplexes, et cetera. And you answered the question via email kind of to that extent, saying that you prefer not to bundle utilities with rent. I guess I'm just, yeah, I wanted to ask for an in-person kind of explanation of that, and is it something you'd ever consider? I'm not honestly that worried about it in the context of this project, and it's a big change to be asking at this point. I'm not really trying to do that, I'm just trying to understand better and think about it, and maybe have follow-up both with Trinitas as well as with Alex Crowley from ESD, to think about future projects and how we could do this. Because it is the fact that in 2020, it's actually economical to put up solar panels. If this was just your building, and you were covering all the utilities, it would save you money versus having them just connected to Duke Energy's service. So when it makes economic sense to do it, and in the context of the climate crisis this planet is facing, surely there's a way we can figure this out for large-scale multifamily projects at some point in the future. So if you could speak to that a little bit, and what your reticence is around bundling utilities, and maybe other issues related to that that I haven't touched on.
Sure. No, I certainly appreciate the question, and by no means am I a solar expert, but the question was taken seriously by us. We, you know, went to work and did our research, we critically thought about these things, and I did have an interesting conversation with our CEO this morning, and he made the point to me, which I think is interesting, that solar works best where the owner is the user of the electricity, and it goes to the point that you were just making. You know, it's very difficult to justify the upfront expense when you're not the one, you know, incentivized to reduce the cost in paying that electrical bill. He made a fascinating argument for a potential change at the municipal level, and that was, what if a market rule was imposed in municipalities where all multifamily landlords were required to pay the electric bill? So immediately, almost overnight, he argues, the owners, the landlords, become incentivized to find ways to save energy, right? Now, the downside, of course, is you have residents who now they are no longer incentivized, and perhaps when they leave their units, the lights stay on and the TV's on because the dog's still home, and, you know, they're draining energy when, because they're just not responsible for it. But it's an interesting idea. I wanted to share that conversation I had with, his name is Lauren, our CEO, because he is thinking about these things. We get these questions, we are challenged by this in other municipalities, and so I think it's a healthy, and it's time to have the conversation. With respect to this project, I tried to outline our response. It's, you know, it's a fact, we're structured to allow the tenants to pay directly the energy bills to Duke Energy, for example. That's not coming through our management operations, and so when you look at an expense like $8.5 million to put solar panels on all townhomes and cottages out here, it's really difficult to justify that.
Right, it makes no sense at all unless you're paying the bills. So thank you for your input on that.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to tag on to that. There was, in your email response, you talked about having enough solar on the multifamily building to power the common areas, and it wasn't clear to me whether you thought this was financially feasible to do, or whether you were saying, well, some people do this, but we're not going to do it. So could you speak to that, please?
I did mention that. We did study that. I heard, and I spoke about that, I believe, two weeks ago as something we look at and learn more about. It is similar to the CDG project that was recently approved, how they were going to power the common areas and maybe some parking structure, lights through solar. So I think, although that's not part of our proposal today, it is something that we now understand, and we can kind of see it black and white, what that means to our project with respect to cost, et cetera, and so that's kind of a roundabout way of saying that's something we would consider for this project. Yes.
All right, well, that's good. Tentative, but good. Other questions, general questions before we go to the public? All right, let's go to the public, and we do have three reasonable conditions that I'd just like to very briefly review so that if you have questions about those, you could hold those until we get to them. The first one is about the contract with Bloomington Transit. The second one is about what we've already seen, actually, that the townhomes on the main drive in Section B will be oriented to the street. And then the last one is about having 12 solar-powered electric vehicle charging stations instead of eight. So if your comments are on those things, let's wait, but general comments, please, if you have any, come to the microphone, state your name, and you'll, how many people would like to comment tonight? Just two? Okay, you'll have up to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Sharon Roulet, an officer in Crescent Bend Neighborhood Association. Carrie Winkle talked last week and brought up the idea of traffic at Crescent Avenue, at Crescent Road there, and we really feel that the, what the traffic engineer did not look as closely at it as he should have, and I was kind of hoping that today we would get some more information about projected traffic patterns in that area. We are, we like the idea of having yet a second roundabout up there by the Crescent Road and West 17th, so that would be something that we'd ask of the city to consider that and to study that. The second thing that I would like to bring up is with the city also, and it's kind of like a not, it's kind of related to this and kind of not, but the owner of the land up there that's being sold, I think, is Rogers Group. I'm not, you know, super, I think that Rogers owns that, and they also own the little green space that's by our roundabout at Monroe and 17th. And we would like to have that in the future, set aside as a green space, the little triangle of grass that is near the, at the point where Arlington Road and West 17th come together. And I guess that's not going to be a condition or anything to do with this particular project, but I do know that they do own both properties, and I hope that the future doesn't hold like a Wendy's or a Burger King or something that would be stuck in that little patch of land there. So if you could make note of that piece of property and perhaps bring it up with them or make a plan about that. And so the third point that we have questions about is what it's going to be like with the city being in the real estate business here with your free properties that you get for affordable housing. And we really, you know, like the idea of the workforce, workforce housing, but when you start thinking about it, it just seems like it's new territory that hasn't really been thought out, how it's going to fit into this, the houses are going to fit into the plan for the building complex. Will there be duplexes? Will there be triplexes? Once someone, are you going to sell them, sell the property and then keep the money? What are you, are you going to build all the homes simultaneously? Will they all be the same kind of things, like a habitat community? Or will, like, somebody comes along and says, well, I'd like to build a log cabin on mine, or I'd like to buy, build a triplex on this lot? Are they going to have any uniformity, or are they going to fit in with the rest of the complex? We wrote, we wrote our letter, our questions that are specific ahead of time, and I understand, you answered the questions about, will the city commit to only workforce housing on the 10 acres that will be gifted to the city? If there is no commitment, could the homes be transitioned to habitat homes or Section 8 housing in the future? Will the homes be built simultaneously? Will the owners be able to make some choices like colors and floor plans, or will this be decided by hand or the city? And will the houses all look alike, or there will be variations? How will the homes be marketed? Will the owners be responsible for the upkeep of their own property, or are they going to be, is the complex going to be part of that? And will hand have the authority to enforce violations? So I don't know if you all have thought about, you know, these questions and how this is going to shake down, because there will be the initial selling of the properties to people who are first home, first-time home buyers, and then, and then what happens, you know, on down the road? What can we expect to see there 30 years from now? How's that going to work in our neighborhood?
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We'll try to address that afterwards.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Member, to state your name for the record, please.
Well, for the record, my name is Kevin Tracy. My wife, Rosemary Tracy, and I have a home at 1504 West 17th Street. We live immediately to the east of the Winkles. We have been active members of the Crescent Bend Neighborhood Association. In general, we've been very, well, more than interested, concerned about the integrity and the upkeep of the neighborhood. One of the things I'm very concerned about is the increased density in the population. There's an awful lot of units that are, that I'm sure will be built. One of the things that I, that I would like to be, to address is, and I have addressed this before in other occasions, that the primary entrances to the development be located off of Arlington Drive rather than West 17th Street. There will already be a lot of traffic, once that West 17th Street is finally opened up, there is a lot of traffic prior to the widening of the street. It affects the desirability of the neighborhood. There certainly is research that shows when there is a concentration of properties, and most definitely a concentration of affordable housing in an area, that it can affect the property value in the neighborhood and perhaps the crime rate, too. Crime rate is definitely an issue that we've been very concerned about. Along those lines, I haven't heard anything about whether or not there will be any sidewalks that would go, that would go from the development area out to West 17th Street to connect up with the multi-use path. We have all, we have experienced people walking across our back pastures. Our properties extend almost to Arlington Road, so people, whoever they may be, have often walked across our back pasture, which is a safety risk. So it's my concern that people have, certainly if they don't have automobiles, that they have good access to the nice multi-use path that is to be opened up. So I'm interested in that. And also, I didn't see... And also, I didn't see anything in the design about streetlights. A lot of, a lot of talk about parking. If people are doing parallel parking, I hope that, that there will be streetlights, which also, streetlights is a safety issue, too. And I think that that would, that would affect the desirability for people living there. In general, I am very, very concerned about, you know, will everything look nice and kind of tagging along to comments that Sharon already made, you know, that is there any guarantee that the, that the properties would not eventually be, just could be reassigned or redesignated as, as affordable housing? And so I guess we would hope that the, just the integrity of the upkeep, the maintenance, the desirability of the property will, will be at high level so that the rest of our neighborhood looks good. If we want to sell our, sell our property at some point, it's important that it looks good. And the, and the crime rate, too. That'll be an important consideration. I think that that's pretty much what I'm interested in, that probably, you know, the main thing, I guess in summary, that I really want to stress, you know, quite, you know, very strongly, is to request that the, the primary entrances for this new development be off of Arlington Drive rather than the West Seventeenth Street. That's, that's at the, be a very high, dense traffic area where there was already the conversation about putting in another roundabout at the east end, just, just before the flyover. It's an awful lot of traffic. It affects us in the neighborhood. We don't have a lot of choice on, on what goes on in the neighborhood. So this is our opportunity to say, please consider, those of us that have been living there, we pay the property taxes, we are long-term residents, it's our city, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Well, let's go back to the committee and let's see if there's any follow-up questions, maybe in reaction to the public comments, before we go to our reasonable conditions. Councilmember Rosenbauer?
Yes, from the public comments, I would like to ask about the streetlights.
Yes, we do plan to install streetlights. Yes.
And we do have strict requirements about streetlights in our UDO that all developers need to follow. I want to ask Mr. Garlick to speak a little bit more about the traffic and what, I know our traffic engineer isn't here tonight, but in the course of the staff review and Plan Commission hearings and such, what was the, the staff opinion of traffic impacts here?
So certainly, as we discussed last time, the petitioner submitted a traffic study that analyzed the amount of increase in vehicular trips that would be going to and from the site. That traffic study called out for the possibility of a turning lane being necessitated along Seventeenth Street. You know, we mentioned that we would look into that a little bit further at the final plan stage. We had concerns about the addition of a turning lane along Seventeenth Street because that would widen the corridor, possibly impacting sidewalks along that area as long as retaining walls. So we were going to continue to look at that a little bit. In terms of connectivity for this property to Seventeenth Street and Arlington, something that, that we have dealt with time and time again in planning cases is a lack of connectivity, something that has happened on numerous projects in the past. And so our comprehensive plan encourages connectivity as much as possible. Emergency services, they want connectivity as much as possible, more than one way in and out of a property. So there is a public right-of-way along Seventeenth Street and a property that they required along Arlington to disperse that traffic dispersment along there. So we're fairly happy with the amount of connectivity that is shown here. In fact, we would actually almost probably prefer a little bit more connectivity if it was possible along Arlington. However, a lot of those properties are privately owned. You know, there's no vacant right-of-way there to connect to, to stub to. So the petitioners have, you know, just kind of really worked with the limited resources that they have available to increase the connectivity from this site to the adjacent roads. Does that kind of help answer most of those questions?
I wanted to just follow up on the sidewalk connectivity, so connectivity for pedestrians.
Yep, so, so both of the connections on Seventeenth Street would have sidewalk and a side path. So the westernmost entrance to this development would have a sidewalk on the west side, a side path on the east side of that drive. So both of those would connect to the side path on Seventeenth. The easternmost connection for this would have a sidewalk and, that would connect all the way to Seventeenth as well. As well as the connection to Arlington would have a sidewalk along that as well. So we've got vehicular and pedestrian connections to both of the adjacent street frontages.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
Can you speak a little bit to the city's track record and the development of neighborhoods? I'm thinking of Evergreen Village as an example. That's something that the city initiated, isn't it?
Yes, that is, that is pretty much the one and only city-initiated project where we have purchased land, constructed houses, and then sold those houses.
I mean, it went well, didn't it?
I, I think, I would say so, yes. There was high demand for all of those. They sold pretty fast. And that was a great project.
How, how many units did that reflect?
It wasn't much, maybe a handful, 10 or 12.
A dozen, yeah. Okay. So, but I, my understanding is that we may not handle this larger parcel the same way that we might have more, or maybe we'll master plan it. Like, is there any thoughts right now? And is it planning or hand that's involved in discussion of what that property might be like?
So that would probably be more of a hand ESD, an administration-level decision of how those lots want to be developed. The petitioners have arranged a district ordinance to give us the greatest amount of flexibility there. You know, certainly, we're, we're not really in the business of being long-term landlords. So, but I don't, I just don't think that we've really flushed out exact details to govern how we're going to handle that.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Crowley, can you, do you add any details as to how the city will?
If I had seen he was here, I would have asked for him to.
Will handle the parcels that are?
I stood up just in case I needed to. Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. Eric's right that there's still some planning to be done. But I think, given the scale of this, some of the current thinking is that, number one, you know, addressing some of the questions, so I'll try to go through some of these, we would probably consider a mix of types of housing, so not just single-family, could have some duplexes and things in there. So, so we're trying to figure that out. That we would probably go down a path of doing an, you know, some sort of RF, request for information or proposal from developers to see what kind of ideas might come back from that process to help us think through the development of the lots. We would not own the lots permanently. These would be designed to be owned, purchased and owned, so owner-occupied, which is, which is something relatively new. I mean, we do a lot of things in the rental market, but, but going into the owned and occupied market is something that we have an interest in. There's a deficiency of that, as we know, especially at the price points that we're hoping to get to, which is, which is in the more of the workforce zone. So we're thinking something below the 250,000 range, maybe down even below the 200,000 range. Land value is, of course, one of the key drivers of what the ultimate cost of the sale of a house is. So if we can neutralize that, then, then the house itself can sell for less. And that's one of the values of this offer.
But to address some of the concerns that Crescent Bend had about the disposition of that area of this project, I mean, it's, seems safe to me to say that these will be houses that the city is simply sort of enabling. But, I mean, we're not really getting into the rental business. They'll be treated like any other neighborhood. People who buy those houses will own them like anybody else owns a house in Bloomington.
Yeah, that's right. So basically, our, we would be involved in the upfront transaction. So, so, you know, working through the process of getting all of this set up, you know, the infrastructure set up and all of that. And then we would, we would probably end up doing some sort of covenant or deed restriction on the lots themselves as a way to ensure long-term affordability. So, so that's, you know, so the first transaction's not the only affordable transaction that happens.
And that's the limit. So in other words, the owners will be responsible for keeping up their own property. Hand will enforce violations as with any other house.
That's right. So from, from the point at which the house is sold, it's treated like any other house.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other follow-up questions before we go to the reasonable conditions?
I have one question about the traffic study. You said the, the projected increase in car trips probably doesn't warrant a turn lane. Do you have a number for that increase?
You mean, you know, there's 5,000 average trips now, and with this, it would be 7,000? I think it's in their traffic study where they've got that information. You know, they, they're, their traffic engineers here, they could probably testify exactly to what their traffic study showed.
Mr. Reed.
In terms of numbers. I am not the best one to translate some of that.
Hi, Adrian Reed with Aztec Engineering Group. Bear with me a minute while I find what you need. The report, I don't think it's going to, it doesn't really list an overall volume. It would just be an increase during the peak hours. So the site, it's, the interesting thing is the site itself doesn't really add that much traffic to what is already projected to be on Seventeenth Street or Arlington Road. And so it's, it's sort of negligible, the, the traffic coming in and out of the site compared to the traffic that is already on existing streets.
In their traffic study, they list average daily trips for Seventeenth at 11,000.
11,000, and Arlington's closer to 15.
Wow.
And so the level of service delays, I think, are D. Yeah, it impacts only the site. So the delay, basically, the developer is accepting the delay and backup on their site as people wait to access Seventeenth Street or Arlington Road. So it doesn't really affect through traffic that much unless you have left turners, which leads to the recommendation to add left-turn lanes on Seventeenth Street.
Actually, can I follow up on that? I don't really understand how adding several hundred residents will not impact the traffic here.
It will, it will impact traffic, certainly. It will add trips, the amount of people, onto Seventeenth Street. What Adrian is saying, though, is there's not going to be a delay. You know, most of the people that are coming in here are coming from the east for the most part, not from the west. So you're dealing with right turns in. So when there are delays, there are people that are trying to exit from this site onto Seventeenth Street. So the backup is people waiting to get from this development out onto Seventeenth Street. So those delays are just backing up onto the site. It's not backing up traffic on Seventeenth Street, per se. Traffic is just backing up within this site itself.
And then on Arlington, when people try to turn left from Arlington into the development, won't that cause?
So, so that's one of the other things that their traffic study has, has suggested is there might be a need for a passing blister or something on Arlington. And that's something that we're, we'll continue to look at and make a decision on at the final plan stage.
Yeah.
So it would just be a passing blister to allow for cars to, you know, obviously, pass somebody who's waiting to turn in here.
I'm surprised Arlington has more traffic than Seventeenth. Of course, Seventeenth has had endless constructions. Maybe that's why.
Yeah, and that certainly might change. You know, as Seventeenth Street now serves as a function to cross 69 and get to the west side, whereas before it was really more of a local street.
But those numbers are recent.
2018, I think, is what those numbers are based on.
It's been, it's been challenging to do counts because the road has been open and closed three times now. So you can't get an accurate count. And so the 2018 number is generated from a 2015 number, I think, with a small growth rate.
All right. But what I'm hearing is there may be delays, but they'll be for people who are coming out of the development or going into the development and not for people who are passing by.
Correct.
I've got a question about that.
Councilmember Volan, you had another question?
Is it reasonable to assume that some people trying to access this development may decide to enter on Seventeenth but exit on Arlington because both times that they're right turns? And that that will sort of mitigate some of the, the biggest concerns about traffic piling up, at least on Arlington? I mean, a blister also would help, but is it reasonable to assume that there'll be right-hand turns?
Yeah, absolutely. As people are using the site, if they're discovering that at certain peak times, they're having great difficulty getting out on Seventeenth, they're certainly going to go out to Arlington where it's just a right out and you can get out a lot faster.
Thank you.
All right. Any other final questions from the committee? We're, we're just having questions from the committee at this point.
I'd just like to comment on the traffic study that Adrian said that it was hard to collect information from 2015 because our road has been closed. But I think that even though we don't have a study, we all live there, and we're telling you, you better take a look at that, that intersection because that bridge, people come like barreling off of the new bridge. And there is also another housing project, the Union at Crescent, I believe it's called, which is a high-density complex that's been built down there on Crescent Road. So, you know, I don't have statistics and data, but I do live there and we all do, and we're just saying.
All right.
So you can put that in your minutes.
All right, thank you.
We're just saying.
You're just saying. Got it. All right. Well, let's go ahead with the reasonable conditions then. We have three, and they're numbered three, four, and five. You're not missing anything. There were just, there were like six ideas, and some of them fell by the wayside. They were all numbered before. They became reasonable conditions. So we have three, but their, their numbers are a little odd. Mr. Flaherty, did you want to start?
Sure. So here's condition number three regards the proposed transit route that's been negotiated and discussed in connection with Bloomington Transit. And I see we have Lou May had a Bloomington Transit with us here tonight, if anyone had questions for him. But in short, it is trying to memorialize what has been discussed already with a few minor changes, I think, based on last week's discussion. The committee members were, were somewhat concerned about the, the short period of service on the weekends. So I wanted Mr. May to price out a slightly longer period on Saturdays and Sundays, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The previous pricing we had looked at was 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That increased annual cost from about 338,000 to 358,000, and that amount is reflected in item, or bullet number two of the proposed reasonable condition. So again, that service would be a new proposed route 10, which would be a 40-minute frequency, 360 days of service per year. Hours of operation would be seven to 10, Monday through Friday, and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday. And the rest of it was sort of following up on email conversation with Mr. May to understand precisely how this will be negotiated in an ongoing basis. And, and thank you also, Mr. Gourlik, from your comments last week to explain that as long as the district ordinance is in effect, this requirement will run with the ordinance, and it will be subject to a renegotiation every three years. Final point is that, in line with discussions from two weeks ago, the route may change over time. If Bloomington Transit has different funding, decides there is a different route need, a different frequency, that could change. But the commitment, or the level of commitment from, from petitioner would be the same in terms of a funding level. So that is indexed to inflation, 3% for, at least for the initial two years. So I think that covers the details of the reasonable condition. This is a slight change from what we discussed two weeks ago, even though we had expressed some concerns about the Saturday/Sunday operation. So I'll be interested to hear from petitioner what they think about it. And I could answer any questions, if there are any as well, from committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we go to the petitioner?
No, I'm asking petitioner.
Okay. Well, then, let's hear from the petitioner, what their feedback is on this proposed reasonable And I hope you have the most recent text.
I do.
Very good.
I have the packet here. So I'm looking at reasonable condition three on staff memo, page two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So reactions to that are twofold. One, I understand the increase in weekend timing from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. was stretched from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That drove some additional cost. I think, I don't have any questions there. I, I do need to discuss that internally. I understand that's the reasonable condition. So it represents about a $20,000 a year increase in, in cost. And so I just, I need to be able to speak with that, with our folks internally about that change. That's one. Secondly, relates to kind of what we discussed last time with respect to perpetuity. I understand that this condition will run with the district ordinance. I get that. I, my concern is this. Number one, what if BT were to default in providing their service? What if their level of service was, for some reason, reduced or diminished? We pride ourselves on our level of customer service and sense of place and for our residents. And so we wouldn't want our residents to suffer if BT had an interruption of service for whatever reason. I'm not suggesting they would, but if they did, in fact, had reduced service in the future, I think we would want to be sure we had the ability to get out of that arrangement and provide for our own arrangement that did not interrupt our level of service. So I want to, I'm sure that comes in the details of the actual agreement between Trinitas and Bloomington Transit, but I do want to make that known, kind of go on the record as that, that is something we will be looking for. Secondly, I know a lot can change in the future. We could all be riding in autonomous vehicles in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. They may no longer sell oil and gas in 10, 15, 20 years. It's hard to say. There's a lot of reasons why bus service might go away in general or no longer be the optimal way to get residents to and from a city. And in that situation, I would want to be removed from the commitment of writing an annual check to a service that no longer existed. So these are the things we're thinking through as we hear in perpetuity and running with the ordinance. And, thank you.
Anything else, Ken?
No?
Okay.
So let me just make sure I understand the concern about, you know, in perpetuity or for a long, a long-time commitment. In the current district ordinance, do you not make a long-term commitment to funding transit? I was just trying to find the particular paragraph.
Yeah, I think what we exchanged information at one point was an initial three-year term with annual renewals thereafter. And then the discussion two weeks ago went into a more longer-term scenario. And again, we're generally in agreement with that concept. As long as we write into the agreement, you know, in certain events, if those certain events occur, Trinitas is, you know, not held to that arrangement. If those events were to occur. That's my point.
All right. Other questions for the petitioner about this reasonable condition or for the sponsor?
I actually have a question for Lou May.
All right, Mr. May, thank you for being here.
I'd just like him to respond to the proposal and the comments from the petitioner.
Lou May, General Manager, Bloomington Transit. It's hard for me to envision a scenario where Bloomington Transit would default on the agreement. So, I mean, obviously, that would be a concern of ours. And secondly, as I try to envision what the future is going to look like in terms of transportation, again, it's hard for me to envision a scenario where you don't have mass transit in some form. It may be autonomous vehicles. You know, it's hard to predict what form it will take. But, and it's hard to imagine not having automobiles in some form in the future for the life of this development. So, so those would be my concerns in response to what the petitioner said.
Thank you.
Mr. Flaherty?
Maybe a question for staff, Mr. Gurlik. If, if, in the future, situations change so materially that, you know, Bloomington Transit didn't exist anymore or wasn't, you know, wasn't providing the type of service we imagine today as transit, that, that strikes me as like, what would happen is the city council would, would look at the district ordinance and change it. Like petitioner, if, if they are still the owner of the property, would bring a change to the district ordinance? Is that something that's ever been done in the context of unexpected changed circumstances that are so material in nature, they necessitate, you know, an update of the district ordinance? What would that process look like? Because I don't think anybody's, at least I'm not opposed to Mr. Cannibal, is that right? When Mr. Cannibal said if something is so different that this isn't meeting needs anymore and it doesn't make sense, I don't want to have them on the hook for, you know, $350,000 a year either. I don't think anybody's anticipating that. I think a reasonable response would be to change and update the district ordinance. But I'm curious for staff's perspective.
Yes, absolutely. They can come back and they have, can have any condition amended or removed if it's no longer working out. So that would be something that would go to the planning commission and the council. There hasn't been, to my immediate knowledge, any situation where one specific condition, we have kind of run into this a little bit with the Sudbury PUD on the west side of town where there were some specific conditions that have given a lot of problems that people have discussed coming back and removing or altering, but that path is always there. Any condition of approval, including a reasonable condition, can be removed or amended.
Okay. Maybe a follow-up question for petitioner then as well. I mean, I'm open to including language similar to the effect that you, you know, shared. I just have a hard time imagining exactly what that would look like. It's, we're predicting some unknown scenario. I mean, I think it could be tighter, perhaps, the language here that says this, you know, this amount of funding or this commitment will go, you know, I don't know, we could better define maybe exactly that this will go to transit in, you know, something like its current form. I'm not sure how to, how to write that.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but I could go back to the office and we could draft something up for your consideration, if that's appropriate.
Sure.
I just know if, if, if I didn't say anything, my lawyers would kill me. So I'm saying something, so they don't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open to a reasonable discussion about it. I think your, your, your concerns are valid. And I don't think anybody, anybody would intend to hold you to something that didn't, you know, really exist in the future for the funding. But if it makes, makes your company and your bosses more comfortable if we get something in there to that effect, I'm, I'm open to that.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions about this reasonable condition? Yes, Mr. Flaherty?
For Mr. May, this is coming in part from colleague Councilmember Scambalieri, who is not on the Land Use Committee. I think this is the most appropriate time to ask it, which is about the Route 10 design. And specifically, Ms. Scambalieri had, or Councilmember Scambalieri had asked about the, where the route will go and whether it had been considered to connect with the North Kinzer Grocery Store, the Kroger Plaza there instead, or an option like that. I, my understanding is that it connects to the university because the large multifamily building is expected to be largely a student population from previous conversations and presentations. But I don't know if it directly connects to a grocery. I guess it would get you fairly close to, you know, the downtown Blooming Foods. But has that been thought of? Was that considered? How was the route developed?
Again, we were trying to envision what was going to be the primary trip generating, generator. So the thought was the university campus would probably be the primary place, given it's the largest employer currently in the city. And, and then you have 40,000-plus students. And I think there's some anticipation that there will be numbers of students in this. The route could be designed, though, in any way. And, and we're open to discussing that with the petitioner and developing whatever routes, whatever we think is effective in moving people to destinations that they're going to.
And that, as drafted and as anticipated in conversation with petitioner, that could be adjusted? Like if you're hearing feedback from, from residents, for instance, that they really want a grocery store on the route?
Sure.
Yeah, that could be adjusted.
Absolutely. We're, we're open to that and we understand that transportation needs may change as, as time goes on.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions before we go to the public? All right. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak just to this reasonable condition about transit? All right. Seeing none, we come back to council for comment on the reasonable condition. Councilmember Volan?
We've had the technology to do, you know, like crazy ways of moving people for a long time. The automobile was such a thing. I mean, when the automobile became popular, there were interurban rails crisscrossing the state of Indiana. They were taken out because they thought the car was better. Turns out that the car is not as efficient at moving people as the bus. And the lowly pedestrian bus can move a substantially higher rate of people than cars can. So, I mean, until the day comes where I can, you know, like buy a personal levitation device and just fly places, I'm pretty confident that we're going to, to find this beneficial. And I think actually that this also addresses some of the concern of the neighbors about traffic. The more people who are riding the bus, the fewer car trips there are. And meanwhile, the neighborhood benefits from a different choice they, they can make with a, a bus running by here that they can travel sometimes by bus. So having said that, I think this is a wonderful innovation. I do have a question about 360 days of service per year. I'm trying to think of the five days that it'd be off. I guess Thanksgiving, Christmas, maybe New Year's, but I'm wondering if Leap Day 2024 will, will have a bus service. But other than that, I'm very supportive of RC 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, one, just one quick comment is that I think the routes that had been shared, proposed routes, one showed a 17th Street entrance and one showed an Arlington Street entrance. And I just wanted, or Arlington Road, rather. And I just wanted to express my preference for Arlington Road, just based on the current system map of Bloomington Transit. And that might better serve the Mobile Home Park to the east of Arlington as well and provide some service to an area of Bloomington that doesn't really have it right now or has to walk aways to transit. So just wanted to express that preference while we're on the subject.
Thank you. All right. I'm very much in favor of this reasonable condition. I do want to, you know, see what the petitioner has to say after talking with their legal department about, you know, making sure that they're not trapped in a situation if, for some bizarre unforeseen reason, Bloomington Transit cannot fulfill the service that they require. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to, to revising it a bit within the next week. But I think this is, along with the Motel 6 site, I think this is a great trend of having developers contribute to our public transit system, especially in this site, which is really pretty far from where people work and go to school and, and work, live, and play. This is really essential, in my view, to approving this PUD because otherwise it would be totally car-dependent. And we, we want to discourage that. In the city of Bloomington, we would like to decrease vehicle miles traveled, not increase them, given the urgency of climate change and the commitments that we've made as a city. So I'm very much in favor of this. So if somebody would like to make a due pass.
Second?
And I'll just start on my right.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So we recommend to the full council, do pass of reasonable condition number three. Next, we go to reasonable condition number four. Mr. Volan?
So all this is asking for is that the townhomes in Area B that we talked about a little bit earlier, that they follow the curve of the street, that they not be, I mean, we did hear about a problem with the townhomes on the, the southeasternmost corner where they were trying to avoid a wetland. And so the road curves away from those buildings. Okay, we can't win them all. But on the main street, which we don't have a name for, that we talked about putting parallel parking on, that the buildings be staggered so as to match the curve of the street. And it appears that in the redesign, the petitioners have demonstrated this idea. It's a minor thing and I'm not even sure it's necessary at this point because it looks like they've already planned it. But, you know, in case there's any question, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Volan? And shall we go to the petitioner? Any, since they've already drawn it this way? No? Okay, I see a thumbs up from the petitioner.
I actually have a question for the petitioners related to this. That, you know, the buildings are, show gaps between them. And, you know, this, this idea raised the question for me of, since you don't have like a unified street front there, are you going to put any kind of fencing between buildings to as to discourage somebody who's walking on the sidewalk from walking between buildings unless there's an intentional path between buildings? You can see in this, the staggered houses here, they're a batch of five and a batch of six, a batch of five. But there's spaces between them. Like what's your?
You're referring to the spaces between the cottage and townhome buildings themselves?
Well, in particular, I'm looking like behind it where the, the homes are already up against the street. But you see on the corner, like there's a, a gap between the buildings.
I see. Yeah, you know, we are not currently planning to fence in between the buildings. That'll be green space, that much of that will be planted. And so, you know, we do not have that planned today.
Okay. It was a, it's a minor question, but thank you. Anyway.
I have a question for Mr. Gurlik. It looks like you made a little addendum to the map. Was that you? No, that was the, oh, that was the architect. Okay.
Oh, that was me. Yeah.
So I'm very interested in this because that, there's another curve that perhaps would be beneficial to have the townhomes follow. Mr. Moriarty, would you speak to whether that is feasible?
Yes, please.
Maybe Mr. Fania would weigh in as well.
Yes, and danger of losing my job. There's, we could do a similar type of arrangement that we did here where we kind of bring those forward a little bit. And that's the flexibility I think we're going to need to work with, with staff on is just because of the grade, there's, there's a lot of grade. And things are going to be dictated by grade in terms of ADA access and sidewalk and all those sorts of things that we'll need to hopefully have enough flexibility to work with staff on getting a suitable arrangement that meets code and still does some of the things that we're trying to do here.
I would suggest that we'll look at it, but we start getting close to that wetland area and the grades start getting steeper in that location. I held them back there for that reason, but if we can bring them up some or all, or as shown, we will.
Sounds good. It's something I, I think, well, I don't want to speak for others, but it's certainly something I would be in favor of if it's.
That was my intent as well. I just sort of assumed that there was nothing that could be done. If something could be done to bring those buildings in the extreme corner closer to the road, everyone would benefit there as well.
All right. Are there other questions on reasonable condition four?
I mean, I see on the, the map, the earlier map, that the wetland that draws through there is not, yeah, it's, it's not a big part. It's really more closer to the north side of that curve. If those buildings there can be brought closer to the road, that would be, or the road brought closer to the, the buildings, either way, whatever is most expedient.
I think the petitioner will look into that and I would expect a revised preliminary plan next meeting.
So, I mean, I might, the, the phrase in the reasonable condition is the townhomes along the main street running through Area B. I would love it to, to say the townhomes along the streets running through Area B. But I don't feel the need to change it at this point, as long as everyone makes a good faith effort to try to do the same in that corner as on the main street.
All right. If there are no other questions, we will go to the public. Does any member of the public want to speak to only this reasonable condition? Seeing none, we'll come back to committee members for comment. Anyone who want to comment on this?
Recommend do pass.
All right. I will start on my left.
All right, I will start on my left this time.
Yes.
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 All right, so that's a do pass recommendation to the full council on reasonable condition number four. Reasonable condition number five is one that I'm sponsoring, and it says the petitioner shall provide a minimum of 12 parking spaces in Areas B through D that are plug-in ready and that solar arrays shall be installed to generate sufficient electricity to power these electric vehicle charging stations. This is something that's already in the plans, but in the, the requirement was only eight. So I just wanted to reflect 12, which is what they plan to do anyway. So are there any questions about that?
Any concerns from the petitioner?
Any concerns from the petitioner?
No, we plan on 12.
Very good. Anybody in the public like to speak to this reasonable condition? All right, we'll come back for comment or a do pass recommendation.
Recommend do pass.
All right, I'll start on my right.
Yes.
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 And we are also unanimously in favor of that reasonable condition. So are there any final comments on the overall ordinance 20-04? Council member Volin.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the significance of the discussion we had about parallel versus 90-degree parking. Anything other than 90-degree parking is desirable, especially if you would consider angled parking, that you can then do back-in parking, like with on the last project that we approved, the Tyler Curry project, that would reduce the impact of cars feeling like, of, of what is euphemistically called a street actually being feeling like a parking lot. When you have para, perpendicular parking on both sides of it, it might as well be a parking lot. It's not a real street. So spreading the parking throughout the project so as to put parallel parking on everything that even remotely resembles a street in order to reduce 90-degree parking would be beneficial. And, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what the petitioner and staff can work out between now and next week. I'd like to stay in close contact in order to help, if an RC is necessary, develop that RC so that it's sensitive for everyone involved. But I think that's going to be, at this point, the, the difference between what I think is a good project and a great project. You know, I, while I'm appreciative of some of the neighborhood concerns and some of which I think we've addressed well, you know, there, some of the constraints prevent us from having the connectivity we desire. I would say that closing off one of the two main streets into the project is a bad idea that would create more traffic on the one end and that we should have more ways into the project. Unfortunately, it's constrained by a highway and the like. But for a project as constrained as this, it's done a really great job of mitigating concerns about traffic by having more than one entrance and exit, by putting in a substantial commitment to transit. Frankly, the, the largest one that I can think of to date. And, you know, and also creating the, the walkability that, especially if the, the parking is changed as we've discussed, will really make it a much more walkable place. I do have a, a small concern about the commercial space. One thing that I'm thinking about that I don't feel the, the need to act on right now is that the likelihood of the commercial space will be, of being, being successful will be greatly enhanced by the addition of a commercial hood. That way it guarantees, one of the biggest challenges for any food and drink place, for any restaurant, is the expense of installing the hood. And retrofitting that on a building is much more expensive than thinking about it when you're building it. So if a commercial hood were part of the commercial space, it would, it would be much more likely to guarantee success of a neighborhood serving food and drink place. And with 800 or so people living in this area, I think it would, I mean, the, one of the things that I heard Crescent Bend talk about the last time this project was under consideration was that they didn't want more low-income housing, that it was concentrated in this area. And this is providing a nice mix of all types of, of housing and income levels. And I think that the potential for a commercial space here doing well is, is quite a bit higher than in most projects that I've seen. So just making sure that, I mean, it would need to be a third place, a place where people gather, and that means a restaurant or a bar. And a restaurant is going to, to do well if it's easier to prepare food, otherwise you're looking at a subway. So something that I would urge the petitioners to think about if, I think that it's going to maximize the rentability of the commercial space. And otherwise, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens at this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council member comments? Council member Flaherty?
Sure. First, I want to say I appreciate the, the residents and members of the Crescent Bend Neighborhood Association for being here and commenting and following up on this project over time in both considerations, as well as petitioner for promptly getting back to our questions and considering them seriously and helping work through, through our questions and concerns. I'll echo council member Volin's point that I agree that the more we can make streets in parcel, I believe it's be less like parking lots and more like streets, that much better in my mind. I still have some reservations about the fronts facing backs of homes. I think that's kind of a, a function of the, the wetlands and the shape of the lot. There maybe is nothing that can be done about that besides trying to design the buildings in a way that they can still have some interaction across that, that street. I think, I'll, I'll mention two other things. One is that the street grid obviously is something I was interested in and, and think it's really important for us to, streets are going to be around a long, long time when they go in and, and to the extent that we can implement a grid, that's, that's great. I know there are constraints here. The one sticking point sort of for me, and it's not a deal breaker, but I still think when the street comes in from 17th, the westernmost entrance, I would have loved to have seen that go straight through all the way to connect with the east-west main connector road. I think it was mentioned that the idea was to slow traffic or reduce cut-through traffic. But I think on balance, I actually think it's better the opposite way. Like when we, when we design cul-de-sacs or roads with curves and, and neighborhoods to avoid allowing traffic, what we do is we concentrate it all on arterials, which creates very busy roads and kind of this collector system that, that I think we're trying to get away from. I know that elements of what I sort of drew up as a, as a conversation point were not implementable necessarily, but I'll also say I have less concern about the increase in impervious surface in the context of making a really good public space, just for, to share those views with staff and for future developments. I, I think that's okay when we are, when the priority is to make it a good street scrape, streetscape and a good public space. Final point, I appreciate again petitioner helping to explain their thinking in the context of solar energy and rental units, and it's something I'll be following up on with, certainly with Mr. Crowley with ESD to talk about how we can try to address this split incentive problem and figure out a structure that might allow for future projects, whether from Trinitas or from other developers, to, to pursue what, if we can get the structure right, is in everyone's economic interest. It saves everyone money and of course is the right thing to do for, for all of us, for, for the future of our planet and, and for meeting Bloomington's commitments on, on climate change. So I'll leave it at that for, for this week and again, thank you everybody for commenting and tonight. Thanks.
Council member Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I first wanted to say I really appreciate the petitioner for working with city staff to make some changes that we up here were worried about. I really liked that you added some townhomes to the area, area across from the multifamily with the duplexes, so I, I like that mix in there. I think it does change that for the better. I mean, I will echo what my fellow council members up here have said so far, that I do hope Area B can get to a more grid feel where kiddos won't be playing in a parking lot or, yeah, most, most interactions won't be happening in a parking lot, but folks have talked to that. I will echo the concerns of the public and members from Crescent Bend Neighborhood that I'm, I am concerned about the traffic on 17th, especially at that Crescent Street area. I do drive there on a regular basis and sometimes run through it, and it is hard to see. So I know at last meeting I, I spoke a little bit about maybe that, hopefully we can look into a flashing yellow for bike ped to get through there. I know that would be something we would look at with the city, but it is a hard place to cross, and if we want people to bike and walk out of there, we're going to want to give them a safe place to cross that busy street. Let's see. I am also really excited about the bus route. I think that working to get a public bus instead of a private shuttle is a really great opportunity for other folks. We've got homes right across from this. We have new workforce housing going in on Crescent that's almost finished for residents, and we have Chandler's Glen residents who will, I think, really benefit from another bus option, and I'm excited that we have a 40-minute frequency. And I would hope over time we could maybe get that to something closer to 20 minutes just so folks can get out the door and not necessarily have to check a schedule. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Well, nobody, none of my colleagues mentioned that Trinitas is giving the city 45 single-family lots, which I think is amazing. I think it's a wonderful aspect of this project. I'm sure everybody agrees. It's just, there are a lot of things to think about here. So I, I commend the petitioner for doing that. I think it's very exciting for the city to be able to develop workforce housing, housing that is more affordable than what most people can find within city limits. And to combine that with a bus route is excellent because then, you know, a family may be able to be a single-car family instead of a two-car family because of the bus connections that they have from here. So I think that's exciting. I think the, funding the bus route is, is exciting. I do think we need to have at least every 40 minutes, so that's why I support that reasonable condition. I also agree about the, the parking lot between the two rows of townhomes in Area B, that that is not desirable and not neighborhood-friendly, not, you know, it's not conducive to community activity and neighborliness. So I do hope we can cut the number of perpendicular spaces there by adding on-street parallel parking. So looking forward to seeing how that conversation goes with the developer. But I think this is an exciting project and I like the, the changes that have been made to combine some of the cottage homes with the townhomes, mix it up a little more than it was previously. So I'm, I'm very excited about this and I appreciate that the petitioner has listened to us and, and made some changes that, that addressed some of our concerns from last meeting. So I'm ready for a recommendation?
Recommend do pass as amended.
Second.
All right, so now we will just do a straw vote of our recommendation that we will send to the full council, and I'll start on my left.
Yes.
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 All right, so our recommendation to the full council is to approve three reasonable conditions and to approve the petition as amended by those conditions. And I believe that's all of our business tonight. This will go to the full council at the regular session next Wednesday, March 4th. So you'll have another chance to speak then. Oh, before we go, I did want to make sure that the neighbors received the responses from Eric Grohlak to your, to your questions. He did respond via email, so if you didn't get that for some reason, you can check with, with the staff. So thank you all for being here.
Move to adjourn?
Second.